Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to session at 7:03. All members of the Town Council are present. I'd ask that you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied in the United States of America and to every other working family, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the swearing-in of our newest Barrington Police Officer, Regan Jeffrey. Chief, if you'd come forward, please.
Thank you. I don't know where I'm going. Is that good? Come on up, Officer Jeffrey. A recent hire, Officer Regan Jeffrey, is 28-years-old, grew up in the city of East Providence. He has a bachelor's degree from Rhode Island College in Justice Studies. He recently attended the 22-week Rhode Island Municipal Police Training Academy. That entails, as we all know, use of force, PT, firearms training, police patrol operations, criminal law, crash investigation, basic crime scene report-writing, motor vehicle law, officer survival, and on and on and on. In addition to that, he graduated in December of 2019. He's been in what we call the field training programs, 12 weeks long, modeled after the San Jose model. I believe he has about four or five weeks left in field training. He's doing very well. I pulled out a -- I haven't done this in the past, but I found one of his letters of recommendation. Tells us a little bit about Regan and his -- some of his accomplishments, but I want to read little pieces from it as quick as I can. Words used as exemplary focus, determination, a fantastic leader, a fierce competitor, most loyal, and trustworthy, most of all. In addition, the most spectacular thing I've witnessed Regan do, quite frankly, one of the most amazing things I've seen any person do, save a life. In 2011, while Regan was working as a lifeguard for the East Providence Recreation Department, he saved a young boy from a near drowning by rescuing him from the nine-foot-deep end of the East Providence Boys and Girls Club pool. Regan was able to retrieve the unconscious boy from the bottom of the pool, brought him up to the deck, and performed CPR in bringing the boy back. Regan received a commendation from the East Providence City Council for his heroic efforts. I'm sure, like all the other officers we hire, you know, we do a thorough background, but I just wanted to read some of those accolades on Regan. And with that, we'll get going. I know we have a long meeting tonight. And Regan will raise our right hand. I, Regan D. Jeffrey, do solemnly swear that I shall be true and faithful
Do solemnly swear that I be true and faithful
unto the State
Unto the State
and support the laws and Constitution of the United States
Support the law and the Constitution of the United States
and that I shall
And that I shall
well and truly execute to the office of Patrolman
Well and execute to the office of Patrolman
in the Police Department of the Town of Barrington
In the Police Department of the Town of Barrington
for the period of my term of service
For the period of my term of service
or until another be engaged in my place
Or until another be engaged in my place
or until I be legally discharged therefrom
Or until I legally be discharged therefrom
so help me God
So help me God
I, Regan D. Jeffrey hereby accept the office of Patrolman
hereby accept the office of Patrolman
in the Police Department of the Town of Barrington
In the Police Department of the Town of Barrington
and agree to obey and be bound by
and agree to obey and be bound by
such rules and regulations
such rules and regulations
as are or may be
as are or may be
from time to time
from time to time
prescribed by ordinance
prescribed by ordinance
passed by the Town Council of the Town of Barrington
passed by the Town Council of the Town of Barrington
so help me God
so help me God
Is it? Thank you. I'll have Regan's dad, Richard, is going to come up and do the ceremonial pinning of the officer. He's contemplating. Oh, Dad and Mom, sorry. Think you can help him there?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
And we're good. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, well done.
The next item on our agenda are announcements, and I'll ask our Town Manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through those, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First announcement, we're beginning the budget process, and the Committee on Appropriations will be having their first full meeting next Tuesday, February 11th. And they'll be having the meetings every other week, so this month, February 11th and February 25th, they'll be meeting to discuss the capital improvement program, in particular, and that budget. They meet at Barrington Middle School in room 1402 at 7:00 PM. And certainly, everyone's welcome to come and attend and to provide them with your inputs. President's Day will be February 17th, Monday, February 17th, and the Town offices will be closed. And as I'm sure Counselor Hearn is aware, the Barrington school system will not have a full week of February vacation this year. They'll have President's Day and the following day, the Tuesday, and then they'll be back in class on Wednesday. So the winter break this year will be Monday and Tuesday, February 17th and 18th. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. The next group of items on our agenda, called the Consent Agenda, because they're usually non-controversial. They're considered routine, and they'll be enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove from the Consent Agenda?
Yes. Item 7, the minutes. 8, department reports. And do you want the specific reports?
No, we'll do those all at once after we've gotten through them.
9, abatement. 11, correspondence. And 14, annual committee reports.
Okay. And with respect to the minutes, are you talking about the January 7 minutes?
Yes, the January 7 minutes.
Okay. Vice President Weymouth, anything for you? We'll be doing the Public Works. Okay. Anyone else?
That pretty much covers it.
So with the exception of item, well, the January 7 minutes, we will vote on the 21, January 21 minutes as part of this group motion. I should have asked. Does anyone from the audience have anything they'd like to remove? With the exception of items, the January 7 minutes, item 8, item 9, item 11, and item 14, do I hear a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Why don't we do the minutes first? We'll just get through those. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the Town Council meeting for the January 7 meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. You had -- you had a question.
On the minutes, item 11 on those minutes, which was the approval of Fox Run as a street name, I had recused from that vote. And that's the only change.
With that change, do I hear a motion to accept the January 7 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, the motion carries. Next item is the monthly department reports, and I think Vice President Weymouth, you wanted to mention the Public Works Director Report.
Yes. I said at the last meeting that I was going to make this a regular announcement, because I think it's important, the number of trees that were removed in the past month and how many were replaced. Granted, it's not tree planting time of year, but I think we need to keep track of the number of trees that are taken down and the unfortunate number that are not replaced. There was one removed from -- one tree removed this past month, and no trees were planted.
Counselor Breyer, you had some things you wanted to talk about on the monthly department reports.
Yes, from the Clerk's report, I noticed included there were many new entries to the voter rolls, the voter registration, and I was wondering what the process is for folks coming off the voter rolls, because I didn't see a number that came off the rolls. And so I didn't know if there's a process in place, like if people move or if they re-register somewhere else.
There is, you know, they move out of the town, out of city. I'll put that in my report for next.
Thank you. And also, I wanted to just give a kudos on the -- starting the process for the Town Fact Page to go up on the website. I think that's great. For the fire report, I wanted to discuss mutual aid again. So we had the numbers on, for the year in total, and it looks like the net for mutual aid is, we provide about 150 calls to East Providence each year, once you subtract the number that they provide here. And that's more than 60% of the total calls for Rescue 2. Now, I know it's not actually Rescue 2 going out there, but in terms of the number of calls in total that we have. And I know I had mentioned it once before, but I was just wondering about conversations with East Providence about them building up their department so that perhaps they're not as reliant on us to support their
So the fire chief has discussed it with their fire chief. I've discussed it with the mayor. It's a long process for them to bring another rescue onboard, is eight firefighters, so it's very expensive, besides the truck is the personnel. At this point, it's kind of mutually beneficial in the sense of, the fire chief is leaving Rescue 2 in town if Rescue 1 is on a mutual aid call, so we do have an ambulance ready to respond. We, our rescue billing brings us in an awful lot of revenue to help support, as you remember, that helps support the purchase of the new ladder truck. So at this point, it's not impacting us operationally, it's helping us on the revenue side, and I, quite frankly, don't believe that the city of East Providence will be adding another rescue in the near future.
Chief?
On the
Was there any other comments you'd like me to make on that?
On the mutual aid? No.
Okay. One other quick point, that we do get fire response from East Providence, which is very important. Thankfully, the Town of Barrington doesn't have a lot of building fires, but when we do, East Providence sends us an engine company, a ladder company, a chief, a rescue, a safety officer. So I said to Jim, what is a one-fire call of that response from East Providence worth in rescue calls? It looks really skewed in one direction, but when we put the whole together, and I promised Jim, if it affected operations at all, I'll be the first one to cry foul. But at this point, I'm not seeing that it really affecting us.
No, that's good to know. So the, when they send fire here, that's not reflected in the report?
No, sir. This was strictly, somehow this got started way back on rescue calls. I think it was, you know, it goes back many years, and it's just something that's always continued in monthly reports, that divergence. It was going actually the other way for a while till we put our Rescue 2 in service, which has worked. We've had 240 calls last year that, and that rescue truck was put in service just for East, I mean Barrington residents. So that's proven to work, so.
Chief, how many firefighters need to come to a house fire?
If you look at the standards that we all look at, between 15 and 18 are required to get the job started and done in the first eight minutes.
Of a house fire?
Of a house fire.
And how many do we have on duty at any one time?
Maximum I would have would be seven. It's generally down to four or five if a truck is out of town or a rescue truck. So I could be responding with two, four, or five, but it's never going to be 15 to 18 in eight minutes. So I have to rely on East Providence. Warren is a volunteer outfit. They do send apparatus. I even get them from Seacock. But East Providence is our main, you know, go-to, and they respond immediately.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
That's really good context.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. On the planning report, I was curious if in the communication that went out about the polystyrene ban update, I didn't see Bay Spring Community Center listed, and I was wondering if they were contacted and it's just not here, or if they're exempt? Because I know it's a somewhat town building, somewhat not.
Yeah, I probably did not ask them. I went through our list of committees and commissions and boards, and they didn't pop up. I will be glad, we have a few missing tonight. We've gotten two in that will present next month. So as I collect the leftovers, I will ask Mr. Wood from the Bay Spring Community Center to give us a report.
Oh, this wasn't about the, this was our, the town reaching out to different locations and groups about the polystyrene ban.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure we have. I'll have to check on that.
And then, just curious, might not be, this report isn't probably the right place to discuss it, but the issue of disposal of the compostable paper goods that are now, all of the restaurants have them as a result of the ordinance, but we don't have anywhere that actually accepts compostable paper goods, and there's no collection for it. So it was just, at some point, I think we should look at how to handle that. But that's it for the report. Just about done. Then the police report is the last one, and it seemed that we are fully staffed but not operating at full force because of a variety of reasons. And I was just curious about the timeline to get back to full operational force with everybody on.
I missed the first part, I'm sorry.
With the, the Police Department is, all positions are filled, but not everybody's able to work right now for a variety of reasons. And I was just curious about the timeline to be back to full force.
Absolutely. We just sworn in, sworn in Officer Jeffrey. He'll be available in another four weeks, so that's one back. Beginning today, the, on the report, you'll notice, we had an officer on military leave Guantanamo Bay. He started today, so that'll be two back, so that's huge. We have, and two other officers on the late-duty assignments will
TBD.
One would be maybe in the next four or five weeks as well. So it seems like they're all coming back at once, and then one's on maternity leave until, I would say, at the end of the fiscal year, we should be full staff, like we are currently, full staff and everybody on duty, which would be a first in I don't know how many years, even prior to me being chief. So we hope, fingers crossed.
Then one other question. I noticed that there was a violation and fee assessed, I guess, for the unrestrained dog. And I was wondering if that's as a result of increased enforcement based on our discussion of it, or is it just coincidental that it happened, and if we're seeing any change in behavior based on that being kind of surfaced here?
I, you know, I wouldn't say it's a result of the, this is December report, too, so we're going to re-earse it a little bit. I don't know when you discuss, the discussion might have been post-December or close there, too. So I don't think the effect would probably be on that, but our ACO is very busy. I think it's just a constant on the unrestrained dogs, but that's normally several warnings, too, before we just, you know, go out and cite somebody we define. So I would have to say that that person was probably warned several times prior to, as well.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Anything else on the monthly department reports? Do I hear a motion to accept the monthly department reports?
So moved.
Second?
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item 9. Counselor Breyer had questions or concerns about the approving of the abatement list.
Yes, so I was, I had attended the Board of Assessment Review meeting a couple weeks ago and was glad that that issue was resolved and that the taxpayers' feel made whole. I know that's not reflected on this report, but I expect that the dollar total of next month's report is going to be significantly larger. And so I was going to ask two questions. One, if it's possible to also have a report of what that might mean on programs and services side. So if we're abating, we're going to lose a significant amount of revenue that was budgeted for. So if we can just get confirmation that we're not going to be impacting services or anything like that, just to see kind of both sides of the ledger when we approve that one.
Yeah, typically, although this year is rather unique, but typically, the abatements don't have any impact. They vary from year to year with the tax exemption, senior tax exemption increase. It had minimal impact, and I would assume this year, but we'll keep a close eye on it. But I don't anticipate any reduction in services based on the abatements.
So the second part of that was wondering what happens with all the similar homes that had their valuations changed as part of the policy that did not appeal this year but could potentially appeal next year if they're not reset, knowing how the Board of Assessment Review views that now? If we want to proactively adjust it so we don't end up with a very significant shortfall next year?
It's anticipated that the plan going forward is that the assessment process, the appeal process, will continue. So those that chose to appeal this year will be addressed over the course of the next couple of months. We've had seven addressed so far, and they've, their appeals have all been approved by the Board of Assessment Review. Those folks that did not appeal their assessments, there's no plan to roll them back en masse. However, they will have the right to appeal next year, just as anyone else would.
Right, and knowing that if they did, we know how the Board of Assessment Review views that, we could looking, be looking at a huge budget deficit then, knowing that they'd all be approved, because they're all, it's all the same reason. So I think it might be good budgetarily to do it in advance so we don't have a large deficit.
I don't think they've, that the tax assessor has certified, the rolls are certified as of 12/31/19, but they're not certified on 12/31/19, right? They're certified closer to the
Closer to the Fighting Against the Town Meeting.
Right.
After, after the Fighting Against the Town Meeting.
Right. Okay, so there is that time to determine where, at what level those 2018 purchases Anything else on the abatement list?
No, I'll, motion to approve the abatements as presented.
So moved? Or second?
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The next item on the agenda, Counselor Breyer wanted to address the correspondence.
Yes, I just wanted to kind of reflect that with the exception of the thank-you letter that we received from the Good Samaritans, that the other four were all really on the same topic, which was this assessment's issue. They each have different titles, but I think it's important to note that there, that we've received a lot of correspondence about that same issue. So I just wanted to state that in open, because not everybody's going to look at each letter. But with that, I move to accept the correspondence.
Does anyone want to second the motion to, it's a motion to acknowledge the correspondence, right?
Yes, yes, motion to acknowledge correspondence.
Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item, Counselor Breyer wanted to point out that the, other than the summary that is in item 14, there were no individual reports. Is that, have I said that?
There's one. The technical review committee report is there, but none of the other reports were in the file, so I just wanted to move that off, and we can review them and vote next month.
Yeah, as I stated, we haven't gotten them all in.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure that they're all attached. I'm not sure why they weren't attached this time. That was a clerical error.
Do we need to, might move to continue it?
Yeah, you need to move to continue all except, you said the technical review one was in here?
Yeah.
Okay, so all of them except for that one would be continued. You can approve the technical review report.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue the acceptance of the annual board committee and commission reports with the exception of the technical review committee?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And is there a motion to accept the technical review committee's report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The Bristol County Water Authority Monthly Report.
Good evening. My name is George Jamplin, I'm with the Bristol County Water Authority, and I'm pitch heading for Allen Klepper, who is right now down in beautiful, warm Florida. The minutes of the last meeting have been sent out, and be happy to read a summary of that, or if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain any questions or thoughts that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Jamplin?
I do. I might also add that in addition to the minutes, this, I'm assuming everybody got a copy of this, it's sent out by Pam, the Executive Director at the Water Authority, and it also discusses in greater detail, you know, what's happening at the water company. It's in addition to the minutes, too. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. We have one vacancy on the Economic Development Commission for one full member, and we have three folks who have come to apply. And I'd ask John Bracken to come forward, please.
Yes, I'm John Bracken.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in tonight, and can you tell us a little about yourself? And you've actually applied for appointment to three boards, so rather than ask you to come up three times, could you tell us a little about, I suppose if you're telling us about yourself, you'll tell us what you can bring to the Economic Development Commission, the Housing Board of Trustees, and the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Sure. My wife and I have lived in Barrington since 1980. We've raised four children, all going through the public schools. We've raised four children, all going through the public schools. I retired several years ago from Textron. I had a 35-year-long career in the legal department. During that time, I spent a lot of, a lot of time looking for facilities, building plants in the U.S. and overseas. Most of my experience with economic development is evaluating offers, how they would appeal to the Textron business that I was representing. But I do have a fair background in tax and corporate law. In terms of housing, I have very little experience, although I have an interest in fair housing and affordable housing. Parks and Recreation, we go to the parks, but I have no particular background in sports or lawn care, despite the fact Textron had a lawn mower company.
We have experts on lawn care, so we don't really, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bracken?
Do you have a preference for any of those committees, or can we appoint you where we most need you?
Well, I'd like to say, put me where you most need me.
Okay.
But I would think I'd feel more comfortable with economic development if that would be an opportunity, because it's something I'm generally familiar with.
Right.
And would you be, would you consider joining more than one board? Or is that too much to?
No, that's, I'm retired, so that's fine. My priority are my granddaughters, but that's okay.
Okay, well, that's important. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Horowitz, is Mr. Horowitz here? Thank you for coming in tonight. Tell us a little bit about yourself, please, and what you hope to bring to the Economic Development Commission.
Hi, I'm Dan Horowitz. I've worked in economic development at the federal, state, and local level for on and off about 20-plus years. I moved to Barrington about two years ago from Washington, D.C., where I worked for the U.S. Department of, sorry, the U.S. Small Business Administration. Actually, work for the Providence office now of the U.S. Small Business Administration. I know economic development pretty well. I work closely with, gosh, all the economic development funds that operate in the state. For instance, the Ocean State Economic Development Fund, the Southeastern Economic Development Fund, SED and Totten, the CIC, Community Investment Corporation, which is based in Connecticut but operates here. Each one of these is supposed to do micro lending, which is up to $50,000, but actually only one only does. I work, I oversee all the banks, credit unions that do SBA-related lending, which is commercial lending that's guaranteed by the federal government to encourage people to give loans. Just about every restaurant in Barrington has one. I unfortunately know way too much about each one of those. I work closely with Department, with Commerce RI, with the U.S. Department of Commerce, U.S. Treasury, with the other community development corporations that operate in New England, as well as the CDFIs, the Community Development Financial Institutions, which are based along with the larger and regional financial institutions. It's, yeah, obviously, I do this a lot. It's what I do, it's what I love, it's what I'm passionate about. I did a lot of volunteer work around economic development when I lived in Virginia. I've done it at the state, local, and federal level. My kids are in school here. We're not moving. We're here. My wife, we moved up here to take care of my wife's family, who, their parents are getting older. It's that time of life for us. So I'm able to take all that energy from living in D.C. and being that type of person to, honestly, I live in Barrington River now. It's nice, it's relaxing, it's peaceful. I've got lots of time.
You got a 12-minute commute, right?
I'm sorry?
You have a 12-minute commute.
I have a 12-minute commute instead of 45 minutes or an hour for 10 miles. So really, it's pretty, pretty nice and pretty relaxing. This is about as energetic as I'll get now, other than if I'm playing, hanging around with our boys. It's, it's kind of nice. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
No.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your willingness to serve. Benjamin Reese, Mr. Reese.
Good evening. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for having me.
If you could tell us a little about yourself, please, and what you could bring to the Economic Development Commission.
Sure. I live in Barrington right now, and I'm attorney in Warren. I've studied, my undergrad was spent studying economics, accounting. I have an accounting degree. I worked a couple of years at the Division of Taxation, familiar with bankruptcy laws, taxation and state and federal taxation. I do estate planning now, and I'm very familiar with really how to keep businesses going and how businesses feed our communities. And do you have any questions for me, based on that background?
Any questions? No. Thank you very much. Thanks for your willingness to serve. This is, I think what we've called an embarrassment of riches. We are so fortunate to have a lot of really good volunteers in our town, folks who are willing to give of their time and their talent to support our community. And I think other places might have a hard time getting folks. We're fortunate to have really expert people who are willing to step forward and help us. So this is just by way of saying this is a really hard decision.
I'd just like to add that anyone who has an interest in any of these boards and commissions that may not be appointed tonight because of the embarrassment of riches is welcome to show up and participate at the meetings. And also, it's very helpful to keep your name available in the clerk's office for whenever there might be a vacancy. And there are plenty of times that people have to move out of town or increase their workload or whatever. So it's, it's very helpful to have your name in, kept on, kept in the clerk's office.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Daniel Horowitz to the Economic Development Commission. I don't have the.
As a full member.
As a full member with a term expiring.
April 30th, 2022.
April 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And now we've had one interview already, Mr. Bracken, for the Housing Board of Trustees. Does anyone want to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to appoint John Bracken to the Housing Board of Trustees as a second alternate with an expired term of February 28, 2023.
Second. Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bracken.
Mr. President, if I, if you'd indulge me for a moment, I can throw a curve ball here. Both Mr. Bracken and Mr. Horowitz have been appointed, and Mr. Reese seems, as we, you've noted, eminently qualified. There is still another opening on the Housing Board of Trustees, and I wonder if the council might want to ask him if he would entertain that appointment.
That would be, oh, that would be great. We have to put that on our next month's agenda, right, Mike? Because it's not on, or?
Well, actually, your Housing Board of Trustees is on the agenda.
Okay.
So you could make an appointment to it.
Oh, that would be great. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Yes.
You have the date, you can make.
He did give us a thumbs up, and that's good enough for me. And before he changes his mind.
I, I'll make a motion to appoint Ben, Benjamin Reese as the third alternate to the Housing Board of Trustees. Thank you so much. With an, with an expired term, it's the same day.
With a term to expire on February 28, 2023.
2023.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That's great. Thank you very much.
That means that the Housing Board of Trustees is finally full after how many years of it not being. Thank you very much.
And for, for folks who might not be familiar, an alternate is a full and participating member of the board or commission, but the vote only registers if other full voting members are not in attendance. So it helps, you count toward a quorum.
Really, that's fantastic, because we've been trying to fill that board. Next item on the agenda is Parks and Recreation Commission. There are two vacancy, one full member and one alternate, and we have one, two, three, four, four folks here. We've already interviewed Mr. Bracken. Anthony Rico, Mr. Rico, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, counsel. As you guys know, I'm a lifelong resident and served this town in many sports and youth activities and proud supporter of our teams. And Michelle does a great job, and the Park and Recs Commission does a great job. And I would love to serve again, either as an alternate or a full member. And I know field space is a big issue and capacity, and being a member of the task force right now, it's been very interesting, and I'm enjoying going to the meetings and helping out in a positive way in that commission, in the committee. And we have a lot of work to be done, but it's almost wrapping up, and I saw there were some openings on the Park and Recs. And I believe, being a lifelong resident and an advocate for our leagues and know what the issues are, working with the commission and Michelle's office, I'll be a good asset for the commission. And I appreciate your consideration. It's a high honor to serve this town. That's good. We have a lot of volunteers, ladies and gentlemen, and I would love to serve in a capacity on the Park and Recs, because I think it's a good fit for me. And like I said, I'm going to meetings, I'm very active anyways, and it'll be nice to get back on. It's up to you guys, though. But thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, the next member is Kelly Chinner Reese, Ms. Reese. Thank you for coming in tonight, and if you could tell the council about yourself and what you hope to bring to Parks and Recreation.
Sure. Thank you very much to the town council for having me today. As you mentioned, my name is Kelly Reese. I bring a lot of academic experience in forest resources and conservation, environmental engineering. My specialty is in wetlands. And so from sort of that perspective, I think that I could offer quite a bit to this particular topic for our, our town. From a personal experience, we use our trail system quite a bit. We love the area off of Kent Park. My daughter played recreational soccer this past fall. So also, as a parent and a member of the community, I participated quite a bit. And then just as far as level of service, I've served in quite a number of professional organizations in my own disciplines in the scientific field, but I haven't had the opportunity to serve our community, and so that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Great. Any questions?
Do we, is, is there an opening on the Conservation Commission?
Sure. I've actually been looking for about six months on the boards, because you post them in real short windows, and I haven't seen one, but I may have missed it. It's a possibility.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering about.
I think we filled it last one.
You can, you can always apply, even if there's not an opening, because sometimes openings come up.
Okay.
So you can always put your application.
And you keep those on.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that Parks and Recreation is also a fit. I know that there's, like, I forget what you said, an embarrassment of riches, so I understand that as well, and look forward to other opportunities should this would not pan out.
And you, you sound very well equipped to, to be an asset on the Conservation Commission.
Sure, I see that they deal with quite a bit of wetlands, and they actually do site assessments for.
Right.
Projects, so.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah.
I've gone through all of your borough shores online, your town planning and your recreational areas, and, you know, mapped them all out, because that's sort of what I like to do, so.
Yeah.
Great.
There's a meeting you might be interested in attending, the Bay Spring Discussion about the, the grant work proposal that's going to be coming. Is that, I think, March 9th, maybe?
Resilience planning.
Yeah, the resilience planning.
I've got the short.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reese. Does anyone have any other questions?
I'm also wondering about the trails, the ad hoc trails group.
I'm not even sure. I'd have to count.
You may find that your nights are getting booked.
Sure, fantastic.
The chair of.
Trying to think. Magnus, do you know offhand if the Trails Committee has vacancies? I'm trying to think back.
I think those are plenty, those were.
Right.
So it's really up to you.
Yeah.
Be happy to have.
All right.
That might be.
That might be the way to do it.
Another.
Another good fit. We have an ad hoc trails committee trying to, well.
I did read your agenda item that's coming up and the signage and everything, so I am somewhat familiar with it, but.
That's developed out of that group. It, it is an ad hoc group, however.
The thinking being that there's lots of property that's controlled by different boards and commissions, and even the private land trusts and things like that, all of which are considered by residents to be their open space. There are trails through all of them, and we'll talk about it later, but it's a major piece of the comprehensive plan to try to connect these. We have DEM permitting issues that are coming our way. We have all sorts of open space and, and sort of passive recreation issues that we're trying to deal with. And that might be a perfect fit.
Yeah.
Good.
Would you have an interest in a different committee?
I would. My major conflict right now is Tuesday evenings. My son participates in the theater, and I'm always, that the town, the Parks and Recs puts on, and I'm always commuting him back and forth. So I was looking at committees that also fit my calendar, you know?
Sure.
So timing would be important.
So our, our kids are in that together. My son is in.
Excellent.
Yeah.
It's a great program.
Yeah.
I think that the Trails Committee is not a regular, it's not.
Meeting pretty much monthly.
Yeah, but not.
But it's not like the second Tuesday of the month kind of thing.
Right.
So.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Next person is Fletcher Thompson. Mr. Thompson, thank you for coming in tonight, sir, and if you could tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the.
Sure, sure. So I, I moved to Barrington in 2012 with my family, and I've raised my kids. My daughter's 11, and my son is 13. And since I've come to town, I've done a lot of volunteering. So I've been on the soccer board and on the baseball board, and I've, was counting tonight, I've coached 14 different youth teams in town. I'm a big user of all the sorts of things, like Barrington Beach and the, the fields and the trails behind the Y Woods and the, the biking trails and, and everything. And I was looking for a way, as my kids get older, to continue to volunteer. And so I thought that the Parks and Rec Commission might be a good opportunity, because again, you know, I come from it, having spent time with two of the major sports in town, and also, you know, as somebody who, who uses the resources of, of, you know, that are sort of looked at by Parks and Rec. And so if there's an opportunity for me to serve, I always think it's good to give back to the community, and I think that I could be a resource in that regard. In my day life, I'm a, I'm an attorney, so I'm used to kind of analytical thinking about how things go. And I moved to town in 2012 because of how great Barrington was. I had about two weeks to figure out where I was going to live from Connecticut, so I looked up where are the best public schools, where are the best sort of resources for a town. And there were two answers in the booklets that I found. One was East Greenwich, and one was Barrington. And I thought East Greenwich was lying, because the commute was longer. They said it was the same distance commute, but on the highway, there was a sign that said X number of minutes to Providence. So I said, that can't be right. And I'm glad with the decision I made, and again, happy to serve if it's something that you think would be appropriate. And if it's not an opportunity that's available to me now, I'm always willing to help where I can.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Textron has brought a few of us, a few of you in tonight, I see. Again, we've got an embarrassment of riches. We did just appoint Mr. Bracken to the Housing Board, but he is also a candidate for this position, Mr. Rico, Ms. Reese, and Mr. Thompson. We have two vacancies, one full member and one alternate.
I'll make a motion to appoint Fletch Thompson to the Parks and Rec Commission as a full member with an unexpired term of. a full member with an unexpired term of December 31, 2020.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And now we have one alternate for Parks and Recreation.
No. Yeah. I'd make a motion to appoint Anthony Rico to the Parks and Rec Commission as a first alternate with an unexpired term of December 31, 2020.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one piece of discussion. Can we add the ad hoc trail link? I don't know if it's technically a vacancy, so I'm guessing we can't do that now. Can we put that on for next month to appoint?
I think we had, we may, I think we need to look into that for adding a member. I remember we had to establish, we --
There was a, there was a --
There was a number.
There was a set membership based on representation from different organizations, but it occurs to me, I don't think we had an at-large member of the public member, which by itself is probably an oversight.
Yeah.
So.
So we could maybe add that.
Yeah.
And then fill it.
Yeah. Put that on our agenda for next month.
Yeah.
If, if you'd be willing to serve, you wouldn't need to come in and interview again because we're all here and we've all seen how qualified you are. If you'd be willing to serve, we could just let you know if that works out so that we have it on our next month's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there's been a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all for your willingness to serve. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is a two-minute statement. This is an agenda item for members of the public to speak regarding a topic that's not already on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. When you're recognized, please approach the microphone in front of the council, state your name and address for the record, and please sign in at the podium. Would anyone like to be heard? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is item 18, to discuss an act on trail standards and signage. Mr. Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here in the capacity of the Chair of the Trails Committee. I'm here to answer questions you might have on the proposal for a uniform trails markings or trail signage. It's, it's recommended in our open space plan from November 7th, 2011, that we establish a cohesive trails network linking open space and recreation areas, which is what we've been charged with doing and have been working on since November of 2018. And it is also recommended here that we have a uniform, consistent park and trail signage, tables and benches and, and other, other things to make the, the space more enjoyable. So we, as a committee, have come, drawn a, a guideline, a Rhode Island guideline on best practices and sources for trail signage and trail markings, which were shared with you in an email. And that is, has been approved and recommended by the Parks and Rec Department. It's been approved and recommended by the Barrington Land Trust and has been discussed and approved by the Trails Committee.
Any questions? First of all, just thank you very much. This was great work. We really appreciate all the time that went into this and the thoughtfulness that went into this. Any questions?
I learned a lot about blazing.
So I, I have actually visited over 20 trails in, in Rhode Island, actually California, Massachusetts and Colorado in sort of passive research for this. And it, the, the proposal that we have is basically the equivalent of accepting traffic signs that are everywhere else so that people who are visiting or accustomed to using trail markings can use a uniform type of language for direction guidance and trail shift and, and such. So the, the plan is very good.
Where would this document live and would it include kind of these first two pages or is that a summary for us?
The first, those were working notes that we had. Are you talking about the, the proposed trail standards?
Yeah, the bullet, the bullet items that kind of explains what was going into it.
Yeah, those were, those were sort of reflections and discussion items. But there is a, there is a note on the, on the second page that mentions the Appalachian Mountain Club Trail Handbook that gives a pretty clear guidance on how to blaze and how the signage should be done in addition to the guidance that's provided in the, in the main document. So that's, that's the purpose of the first, my first document.
Who does the blazing?
So as I understand it, Veterans Park was done by volunteers in conjunction with the National Park Service. They came out and consulted. One of the issues we talked about is sort of the durability of these things and how susceptible they are to vandalism and stuff like that. So as far as blazing, I think it was sensible to settle on the simplest solution is the best one, paint on a tree.
Right.
Signage obviously is more complicated. I can say that when, when we sent this off to be placed on the agenda, I got, I wouldn't call it a panicked call, but a call from Jim saying, whoa, who's going to do all of this?
That's sort of my question.
Yeah. It is not, it is not the intention that these are marching orders, that DPW has to go out tomorrow and clear every trail to eight feet wide. It is that as work is done on these trails, the idea is that it be done consistently. If they are working on a trail, we would expect that they, for example, for the non-walking trails, the wider trails, it would be eight feet wide, eight feet overhead, two feet on either side. Also, it helps equip volunteers because there are a group who will, you know, Eagle Scouts, ourselves, who spent a sweaty July afternoon doing it, gives them the sort of clearance and the guidance. If you follow these, feel free, you know, bring your clippers with you when you go for a walk and get to it. So it's, the idea being that the system becomes cohesive over time because there are standards in place.
Right. So it's similar to the complete streets policy we adopted, that when we're going to do something, this is how we're going to do it.
Right. Okay.
If I can add, next week I'll be meeting with the scout masters from the three scout troops in Barrington to coerce them into continuing to support us with their Eagle Scout projects. And to be able to hand this standard to them as they come up with their plans will be of great help. And as you've said, it'll make them more consistent. So we'll continue to use this. When Public Works goes out and needs to work on a trail for one reason or another, that's a standard that they'll apply as well.
That's great.
So would this be available on the town website? Or would, if, if somebody's going to go out, how do they know to, they could take this?
Yeah, we need to document it somewhere. And I, I think we can probably find a spot on, on the website or add a, a trails section. And that might be something the Trails Subcommittee can help with developing something that we can put on that shows our trails, a map that shows the trails. We'll have to come up with a color scheme for marking the trails and also the standards that we'd like people to use when they volunteer to help us.
Yeah, there, there needs to be some coordination. People just can't go out there and --
Paint.
Paint. Right.
That's, that's actually what is out there now. We have at least five different modalities of markings, various colors, spray paint, plastic signs.
Right. Right. Is that true in veterans?
We have plastic, paint, we have some blazing, we have different colors, and then we have the metal signs that are in the open space plan that were installed in probably 2011. And they've grown with the trees, so they're, they're like the no swimming sign that's sort of embedded in a tree there.
Wow. Okay.
Each year, I usually visit, my sister's got a place in Great Barrington, Massachusetts, and we go to Monument Mountain. And this is just the trustees, which deal with all the parks, all the trails around Massachusetts, do just this kind of thing. So it'll be nice to see that, how, how well-tended and clear these things can be.
Yeah.
There's just one, one, one more thing to add. The, the design of these signs is as vandal-proof as they can possibly be. Simple carved signs that if they're vandalized, they can be re, just repainted and then, to a minimal cost, so.
Yep.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to, to accept the trail standards and signage as a standing practice for trail improvements throughout Barrington.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you again and to your committee for the work. Next item is item 19, discuss an act on the Town Council Contingency Fund. Last month before we had this meeting, we had our Spencer Trust meeting at which Meals on Wheels came forward and gave a, a great presentation on how much they support the folks in Barrington and have asked, had asked for a $500 contribution from the Spencer Trust Fund. We had just completed our budget and rather than kind of change our budget, it was a suggestion that we use the Council Contingency Fund in this particular case with a view towards, maybe we'll modify that in the future and hopefully be able to support it going forward. So this matter is on our agenda to use the, use $500 to support the Meals on Wheels in
I'll make a motion to allocate $1,000 from the Town Council Contingency Fund to Meals on Wheels.
Second.
I know it's more than they've asked for, but I think they asked for too little. The report that they submitted shows how much they spend on shut-ins in Barrington and it was a lot, lot more than $500, so.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
And this will be considered an item to pass over to the Spencer Trust next year? Is that?
I think that's where it would ideally belong.
We have a, a section in our budget for agency support. That's where the donation to the Samaritans goes, the Rhode Island Eastern Forest, I can't remember the exact name of it. If, if the council so chooses to include that in the budget, I would say that that's probably the agency support category is probably the most appropriate place for it.
When you say our budget, do you mean our town budget?
Town budget.
In the town budget?
Yes, sir.
So that's the town fund.
We have, we have an agency support category that I believe supports three, three different agencies currently. And I would recommend that if, if the council chooses to continue to support Meals on Wheels, that's probably the most appropriate place for it.
Well, it does support Barrington residents. This isn't us, you know, we're not deciding to address some worthy cause that's somewhere else in the country or in the world. These are our folks who are benefiting from Meals on Wheels, so.
I, yeah, I don't think there's any prohibition against using Spencer Trust funds. It's just that our other charitable support comes out of that, that portion of our budget.
In the past, though, we ran in, we began to run into some problems when too many agencies were coming forward and wanting to be a part of that. And so I would, I would not be so in favor of, of adding that. I would rather see it be part of the Spencer Trust.
And to --
In the, in the future.
I would have to agree with Kate on this. I think it would behoove us to make a process in which we either evaluate, I think it just opens a Pandora's box to just --
It was at some --
Having lots of requests.
Time in the past.
And it gives, if a charity comes to depend on continuous support, anything in the agency support line is still going to go to the COA and then to the FTM. And so at any point, it could be removed. And if, if an organization is counting on that, it's a little more reliable if it's coming from the Spencer Trust as long as it's within, and this is, so.
That's right.
So just for your information, currently in the agency's support for this past year's budget, we have $750 allocated to the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District and $500 to the Samaritans. But what we will do is, we will build it into the Spencer Trust budget for next year and we'll take a look at those other two separately because they really don't belong at Spencer Trust.
So we do have a motion pending, made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on our anti-harassment discrimination policy. Counselor Breyer, you, you wanted to present this.
Yes. So I, I feel like we're, we're in a time and place where addressing specifically sexual harassment, but any harassment as well as discrimination, it's been an issue for, I don't know, as long as you can count. But I think as time's gone on, we've, we have to hold everybody, including ourselves, accountable. And the, the town's policies cover town employees but didn't cover elected and appointed officials and volunteers. And I thought it was important that we have something in place. It was recommended or suggest, pointed out by constituent who said, I think it was Narragansett passed something similar. And I think I've, I've shared with everybody some edits that I'd like to make to the document. And I put a couple copies on the table in the back if anybody wants to see what they are. But primarily, it was to remove the, either unlawful or unlawfully, because as I thought about it, in most of these cases, there's a lot that won't be illegal because we're not employees. And so the hostile work environment or the quid pro quo isn't necessarily going to be a factor. But certainly if, if I were to use a racial slur to somebody who's volunteering for the town, it's not unlawful, but I should certainly be reprimanded and held accountable for that. Likewise, if somebody does it to me, I would hope that they would be held accountable. And so I wanted to remove the unlawful. And then the other piece was to make the reporting process as easy for anybody who experiences something of this nature, to have them be able to disclose the experience that they had to anybody on the council rather than only either the president or vice president or if both of them are involved, then somebody else. I think if somebody's gone through something that's hurtful, they should be able to approach whoever they're most comfortable with. And I think, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but even adding in the HR director potentially as another person, if somebody isn't comfortable approaching a member of the council, just giving an additional person that they can reach out to. So those were the, those were the changes and happy to hear other people's thoughts and discussion.
I, when was this drawn up?
It was, it was first drawn up as a, purely as a sexual harassment policy by, by the solicitor's office.
Yeah, I believe the council gave us the direction to do that.
Yeah, at our July meeting.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
And then when I first saw that version, that's when it struck me that this should probably also address discrimination. probably also address discrimination as well and not only sexual harassment. And I think once I made a bunch of changes there and I sent it back to the solicitor's office, and I think then they took a step back and said, if, if we're expanding kind of the scope, let's take a more, more thorough look at it. And so that's probably why it feels like it's kind of coming, coming out of nowhere. We discussed this very briefly in July.
Yeah, this, this has really meant as a draft for all of you to look at and comment on. And I know it's on tonight to act, as we always do that, but certainly we need input from everyone, and we might make revisions and continue it or adopt it, whatever the council wants to do.
I, I agree with you that, that the reporting should be to any, any member of the council. And I, I sort of am surprised that, that it's, it was drafted to, that somebody was supposed to go to either the president or the vice president of the council when, you know, either one of us could be involved in it. I wasn't, and why, I think it's, I think it makes every sense to include the HR director as somebody to.
If I might suggest that, you know, making the council available for someone to come to, but for consistency purposes, having the HR director be appointed as an investigative officer to vet this, take the statement. And she's certainly trained in doing that. She does it with municipal employees. And so a member of the council who gets a complaint might refer that complaint to the HR director, who would then take it further down the road and eventually come back to you with the report, so you can make a decision if it was an appointed official, as to how you'd like to discipline or take care of it.
Right. I, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. I also had a question that I noted. I was curious. It says if, where is it? If the reporting person is an employee of the town, I'm not sure if it should be if the reporting person is the employee, or if the reported person is the employee. If.
Where, I'm sorry, where are we?
So it's in the.
Report and investigate?
Yeah, the, the second sentence. If the reporting person is an employee of the town, if the reporting person, if, if the person making the report is an employee, but the person who committed the alleged offense is an elected or appointed official, that's the person who the process happens to. That's the person's actions who would be investigated. And I don't know that it's appropriate that the town be the one, the administration be the one, be the group investigating as opposed to the council. But if the person who is being reported is an employee of the town, then it makes sense to go through the town's written HR process and policy.
They actually already have one. This is.
Right, exactly.
Entirely different.
But I think, I think flipping it, so it follows the process of the accused, not the accuser.
So you suggesting that if, if someone comes forward to one of the council members, that the council conduct the investigation and draft the report?
If it's not an employee?
No, I think he's saying.
Yeah, if, if the person who harassed or made the discriminatory remark or action is not a town employee, I think the council should oversee the process. And if the person who committed the act allegedly is the one being investigated, then it stays with the town's policy. But I don't think it should hinge on the, the person who experienced the incident.
I, I agree. I, I'm just suggesting that the HR director conduct the investigation. If it was not a town employee, if it was a town employee, then I would handle the discipline.
Right.
If it was not a town employee, it was a volunteer, a member of a board or commission, then I would think that that, that investigation would be provided to the council, so the council could take whatever action they deemed appropriate.
But we're not doing the investigation.
No, that's why I'm saying the HR director is the most capable person and most, best trained and qualified person to conduct that.
I agree with that.
But should provide the report to you if it's not a municipal employee, so that you could make a determination, the council could make a determination.
Instead of the manager.
Right.
So you see, Jacob, I, I think, keep with the professionalism and those who have the tools to actually deal with the situation. I, I agree, whether it's a town employee or a non-town employee, let it go to the HR director. If it is a town employee, Jim will handle it. If it's a non-town employee, the council will decide what to do.
Right, but, but based on not the reporting person, the person who was reported.
I would think it would be either. So if it's an employee of the town who's doing the reporting, they should proceed through the normal channels with the HR director.
Yeah.
If it's someone else doing the reporting, but it's about a town employee, similarly, that should go through the HR director. Because ultimately, we don't discipline town employees. So regardless, if it's, if it's the accused or the aggrieved, they ought to go to the HR director.
Well, if it's, if it's the aggrieved and the discrimination came from, let's say, one of us, it's not up to the town manager to act.
That's correct.
It's up to us.
Correct.
So it's, so the, so if it was an employee, it would go through the process we're creating now. If an employee is reporting an action taken by an elected or appointed official.
Right, a non, non-employee.
Yeah, it just needs to switch.
I, I think I know what you mean. Let me work on that language a little bit to clarify.
Yeah.
And let me, I just am curious. So this, what we're looking at is a policy for town officials, boards, commission members and volunteers. Employees of this town have.
They're bound by a separate town.
Whole separate document.
That is correct.
Does the school side of the town have something similar for their town officials, boards, commission members and volunteers?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think so at all.
They do have a nondiscrimination policy that I know the school committee has worked on and discussed. I don't know if they worked on and discussed the policy that obliges all employees, or if they're included in it. But I know that they've, they were involved in the process.
So then I guess.
This would not.
I would love to, to see something that would be for our town. But I guess I'm getting all confused about town, if it's a town employee, they're not, they're not entered in here.
Well, it is if, if the town employee is being discriminated against by a, by a non-town employee, like a member of a council.
Okay, okay. I guess I see the bridge there. Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, no, that's a good question. It's, it's very confusing and it's, we, and we're going to get it downright, but it's, that's why we're having this discussion.
My concern about the deletion of the word unlawfully is that harassing is not defined anywhere in here. And one person's, I can, I can recall an occasion where we were at a meeting when Counselor Voyagein said something about West Barrington that I took offense to.
I grew up in West Barrington.
I know. And you said, and you said East Barrington is now better, now that you're living there. I don't mean to make light of this, it's just that harassment is a very, defining harassment is kind of like trying to nail Jell-O to the wall. It's a very amorphous term, and therefore, using the term unlawfully piggybacks on the, the language that is used in statutes to define harassment. In any case, I, we should be clear about this. The most, tell me if I'm right about this, Mike. The most egregious penalty any member of any, any elected member could face would be some kind of.
Censure.
Public censure. Because you can't remove a member.
Correct.
Or fine a member, or anything like that. There's no ability to do that under state law. So this is for purposes of the council, this is aspirational, and it would, it would call for people to be censured.
Sure, unless it rose to a criminal event, which is obviously totally different, yes.
Right. But the, the reason that I like the, the term unlawfully or unlawful is that it, it helps to narrow this to, rather than becoming something that's just merely, I could imagine somewhere in the future, someone using it politically to claim that a complaint for harassment was filed. People seeing that would say, Counselor Jones, there was a harassment file, complaint filed against them, when that harassment had nothing to do with sexual harassment or discrimination of any kind. It was merely somebody who was stating their opinions forcefully. So that's why I, I feel like we need to clarify or narrow the definition of harassment to, and one way to do it is to piggyback on existing definitions in the statutes.
So a concern there could be then something that reasonable people could say is clearly wrong and shouldn't have happened, but isn't unlawful, is therefore now not, not enforceable. So maybe.
It's not enforceable anyway. So let me, let me explain why. If someone does something that we would all, I, you know, we can't, maybe we can't imagine it now, it doesn't fall under this, but it's reprehensible, or we don't have this in place, and someone does something that we all disagree with, we can vote to censure them anyway. We can put it on the agenda and say that Counselor Jones, what Counselor Jones did was bad, and we can censure them with or without this. And so if it falls outside of that, if it's beyond the pale, but yet not harassment or something else, I'm not sure what, maybe something, hopefully we'll never run across this, this issue that we need to identify it. Certainly, it can be placed on the agenda to censure Council Member X without this. This helps to identify one area of wrongdoing which would lead to a censure, in our case. And in the case of a member of a board or commission, would allow us to remove them because.
Correct, and remove for cause, that would be.
And this would be identified, I mean technically, we could probably remove them for cause without this, if they did something that would fall under this, but this helps to clarify it and, and identify that area. Do you see what I'm saying?
Me?
Counselor Breyer.
I'm thinking my own line of questioning, sorry.
Okay.
I, I am aware of a situation where there was a board member who, I would say, made derogatory and sort of misogynist comments towards other board members. And there was nothing, as I look back at that, there wasn't anything in place with how to deal with that. And was that unlawful of that board member?
Would it, so would it have fit the definition of unlawful discrimination or harassment?
This person made board members very uncomfortable and.
So even without that, you could call that cause by itself and seek to remove that person. Generally, how we've handled those kinds of situations has been to ask them to resign. I don't think we have ever, certainly, I don't know if you ever did, in your time on the council, ever have to have a hearing to remove someone from a board or commission.
No, it's, it's nearly impossible. It's, it's very difficult to do.
Mike, would you say that this would enhance our ability to remove someone if they said something misogynistic or, I guess that's, I mean, would that help us, would this help us to remove someone?
Yeah, I mean, to have something on record, to have the policy on record, and everyone is aware of it, it makes it a lot easier. Because there, there is then something up against which we measure. There's a metric now that we can discipline or, or do something with. So it's always best to have it in place. I, I mean, the conversation about the lawful, unlawful, should that word be in there or not, I, I do think that's up for debate among you, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Can public comment or not?
Sure.
Sure.
Please.
So I'm Sarah O'Brien, 88 Boys Avenue. I'm here because I'm actually the person who forwarded the Narragansett, and I don't think it was Narragansett, I think it was South, South Kingstown.
Yes.
Because they're a lot more progressive than Narragansett, but, and I was also at the State House during all of the agony hours of discussion about revamping the state's laws that failed so horribly, the whole packet failed, which is why individual towns need to step up, is because the state has huge holes in their policies. And as a business owner, I just want to say, like, I think there's a really big difference between unlawful and hostile work environment. And I think we're asking volunteers to sit on boards, to volunteer in schools, to do all of these things that take a significant amount of time in their life. And when we create hostile work environments and do not create safe environments for people to be in, it, it creates real problems and creates a lot of ill will. And I think they, as someone who does volunteer quite a bit, I, you know, I was sort of shocked to learn that I wasn't protected under some of the sort of common, what I would have thought, common sense policies around being bullied or harassed or discriminated against. So I would strongly encourage you to think about what type of work environment you want in this town, on all these committees, in these other places, as well as within the council and elected bodies. And to grant those, and I don't know what the right words are legally, but clearly there's a definition of harassment out there somewhere that rules what happens with employees, so, and discrimination that happens with employees. So whether we can borrow some of that language to define it, or whether we can create some other standard, I think it is important, what you're saying is important, to define that in some way. But I think that unlawful is not enough of a standard. I, I just really don't think that it's enough of a standard. And I really hear what Kate says, like, about being in an environment that becomes hostile, like, it's just, and especially if you're a volunteer, who needs that? So, and it certainly doesn't benefit the town as a whole. And I also think, as a municipal body, we should be exemplifying what we want our businesses to be, what we want our community to be. And so if that means that we set a higher standard, so be it. I, you know, I really, I feel like that would be a good thing to set a higher standard than what people would expect elsewhere, because it should be an opportunity for respect and an opportunity for working together and leadership in that way. So that's just mine.
I think, I think that's a, a good point, and I, I, I don't think there are other town councils that are liaisons to their town boards and commissions. I've never, I haven't heard of that. And frankly, that's why I take my liaison position so seriously, because I attend those meetings to make sure that our volunteers are serving the public well. And there have been occasions.
And each other.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And there have been a number, a handful of occasions where a board member treated the public really poorly. the public really poorly. And that was, they were, it was difficult to remove those, those board members, I think because there wasn't something like this to begin to create a record or what have you, so I think that's-
Could someone take a crack at definitions?
Yeah, I'm taking notes here with all this feedback. Let me work a little bit and finish and just continue.
Does anyone else have any thoughts they want to give to Mike for the next draft?
I think having a definition of harassment probably is wise.
I just have two specific comments, depending where we come down on the unlawfully thing. Second line, it says as well as illegal, if we strike unlawfully, that should probably say am potentially illegal. And, let's see here, this is the third paragraph, I'd only want sort of an introductory phrase there, just to make clear that the town council's going to undertake its investigation if is the accused that is not a town employee. And that's, I think it's kind of implicit in there, but I don't want the town council to get in the business of investigating employees.
We'll make that very clear from the whole policy, because that's what it's meant for.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Then I'll make a motion to continue this to our March meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is-
Sorry, I have to recuse myself, I have to choose.
Mr. President, the town planner is ill this evening, so I'm trying to fill in, however, we do have Jamie Rhodes here from Good Energy, but just to give you an overview, we had talked about energy aggregation for the municipality. Phil was working that, we have discovered through Good Energy that Providence is now aggregating with the potential addition of Central Falls and South Kingstown, and we feel it's a great idea for us to join in with them, a bigger bang for the buck, so to speak, and I'll let Jamie get into details.
Sure. Members of the council, thank you very much. Just as a reminder, my name is Jamie Rhodes, I work for Good Energy as the Rhode Island Sales Manager, as well as their legal counsel here in Rhode Island. And yes, I was here November, December, I cannot quite remember when, when I got to give, me and my colleague, John O'Rourke, got to give you a shortened presentation around energy aggregation. And so we are happy to come back to you today to just give you a quick update about where the process has led to, at least with other towns. I know Mr. Cunha brought up both Providence, Central Falls, and South Kingstown. I actually have great news, is that as of this afternoon, the Board of Contract and Supply in Providence did award the bid to Good Energy to develop their aggregation program. So at this point, we go into that contracting phase of actually working out what the services arrangement looks like, so I don't have an update on what the final relationship is going to look like, but that's the beginning of the process. Last week, I had a similar conversation in front of the South Kingstown Town Council. It was their working session, so they have to push over to their next meeting for them, for proper notice, in order to actually vote on this. We are, the conversation as well as the discussion was an intent to follow the bidding process that Providence undertook and to follow their award. Obviously, it's up to them to actually vote on it, I don't, I cannot bind them in any way. And then with Central Falls, I have a meeting this Friday, actually with their town planner, with, to understand exactly what their process was, their authorizing resolution was somewhat different, and it may just go before the mayor after a follow-up conversation. To give a short overview, Providence undertook a pretty comprehensive bidding process in November, actually it was the end of October through November. I actually have a copy of our bid right here, I'm more than happy, it's published on their website and it's available. The bid specifically referenced about working with multiple towns, Central Falls was explicitly listed, but we knew that other towns had been in conversation, so our goal was to draft a bid response that encompasses the ability of multiple towns working together to develop an aggregation program. So the details are there about both what Providence is specifically looking for, and I know from our perspective, as I've started having these conversations in individual towns, that actually, let's actually go through the hard work of developing the aggregation plan. One key thing about where we're at right now, that we're working really to make clear, is that our encouragement is for each town to move independently, in the sense of having a separate agreement with the consultant you choose, whether it's Good Energy or someone else, to continue to allow the town to have the flexibility it needs to develop an aggregation plan that works specifically for you, and not necessarily just run the same aggregation plan that Providence is looking to do. The factors, the dynamic, the, both the population, the population as well as like the amount of industry and commercial spaces is different, as well as the type of outreach that's expected to different types of communities. So we encourage towns to continue to develop aggregation plans separately, and to go through the utility, the Public Utilities Commission review separately, so that once again, the plan can be specifically tailored to what you need. On the far end of that Public Utilities Commission review process, there will be the opportunity to then aggregate the loads of all of the aggregations, to then go out to competitive suppliers as one, for them to bid on it as one, even though you will have autonomy over how the program operates. So, what we learned, in particular with the Cape Light Compact and the work that they did to bring together energy work, is that a multi-town written formal agreement is difficult to navigate at best of times, and the ability to have a town actually move separately on its own, so that at any moment, you can go through this process and say, we hear what you're doing, Providence, but we don't want to do the exact same thing. You'd always have the time, the ability and opportunity to move separately and independently, should that come forward. So, we encourage, we were encouraging everyone that is either becoming a client or is considering becoming a client of Good Energy, that we, to think about, you can work together through like a handshake agreement, through verbal arrangements, but you don't actually have to contract to follow specifically what other towns are doing, and that way you have that flexibility. So, I wanted to make sure I made that clear, because we're at that point now, but also to be able to answer any questions of what that process looks like, and for the most part, I'm pulling from our experience with SERPED, the Southeast Regional Planning Association in Massachusetts, where we have an aggregation of 23 cities and towns that all went out to bid together, but each one had their own individual plan developed through the Massachusetts Division of Public Utilities, and we believe that same arrangement could be beneficial here. And once again, with them, with SERPED in particular, they went through that process separately, but then on the day of bidding, everyone agreed is like, yes, that term length and this supplier is the one we want to work with. And so if everyone agrees on that, then that's what the competitive supplier is providing the bid for. So-
Okay. And just to be clear, at this stage, we are not committing to any dollar amount or anything like that, we're just-
Yes.
If we were to vote on this tonight, we would just be voting to continue forward with this process-
Yes.
-to ultimately get those numbers.
Yes, that's correct. So, my understanding at the moment is that what we'd be choosing is the consultant to work with, and to reiterate, there's no compensation directly from the city to work with us. Should this be successful and the aggregation plan moves forward, we would be compensated by the supplier, based on the amount of electricity that's used by residents in the town. So, a vote today would allow us to actually reach that agreement point of, we will develop a plan with you. And then what that plan looks like is something that, at least from my experience, working so far in Barrington, is something to work out, especially with the Resilience Committee, as well as the Economic Development Committee, to say, what do we want this to look like, so that we can bring a plan to the council that reflects the needs and the particular interests of the community, obviously working with the planning staff and the manager as well, so that we got all sides, what are residents looking for, what's our economic development side looking for, what does a city need to be put in place, so that we can develop a plan that reflects that, and obviously bring it back to you all for both preliminary approval, as well as the public hearing process that are required under state law, before it can be submitted to the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay. Questions?
Are there any other Rhode Island towns who've expressed interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the work is ongoing, it never ceases. So, we've had really productive conversations, particularly in Bristol, Newport, Portsmouth, Tiverton-
South Kingstown.
South Kingstown, yeah. Thank you. And so, and with this, one of the things, and I brought this up last week in South Kingstown, is that we have a vested interest in making this successful, and in order to do that, the larger this first buying group can be, the more successful this can be. And so, once we got through this point now of knowing that, okay, Providence did choose us as their consultant, we can market that a bit and encourage other towns to move forward. Our internal estimates is that anybody that chooses to work with us, probably towards the, by the end of March, perhaps into April, we'd be able to bring into this first buying group. So, now that we got the vote today, my job is hit the ground running and say, we want to make this first buying group as large and as powerful as possible. My measure of success will probably come sometime this summer.
Great.
I would encourage you to speak with our neighbor Warren as well.
Yes.
We've talked in the past, kind of generally, about working together with them. I'm glad to hear Bristol's on board, but the East Bay communities try to work together on things, so-
Absolutely. We had a, we did have a productive meeting with the city manager, as well as the town council president and Warren. It hasn't moved further than that onto a council agenda at this point, but I obviously encourage any help to push them a little to that next step, to say, let's see what a resolution looks like to pursue this.
So, if, I just want to make sure I'm understanding kind of where we are in the process right now and what action we would take now. Effectively, by joining the Providence bid process, which is what this is, it's just kind of skipping ahead one step in able to choose Good Energy for this without going out to bid on our own, for the consultant who will put together the plan-
Mm-hmm.
...that we then go out to bid on for the power itself.
Yes.
Okay. And this still, doing this, we still keep complete autonomy in terms of deciding how many different tiers we have with renewable versus traditional?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm going to make a motion to authorize the town of Barrington to enter into a municipal electricity aggregation program with Good Energy of Norwalk, Connecticut.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion?
One more piece of discussion, just in, looking at the original six-step process, looks like, in that list of items, this is the last thing that we need to approve. And I don't know if it's that that's not reflected correctly in the list, or if, once we approve this, it goes through that process, it'll go out to bid, and then the final plan and the bid is then selected by the town manager, but doesn't come back to the council.
My understanding is that the council determines the final, I believe it comes back. Am I right about that, or is that to the individual community?
Well, there's some pieces of this that I can't weigh in on, because they're obviously internal to Barrington, and I'm not your legal counsel in any way, he's sitting right there. But my, from our perspective, every town handles a little bit differently about what the final approval part is for the plan itself. Some municipalities say, we'll develop the plan and explicitly has to come back for a vote from the city council to approve it before it goes to the Public Utilities Commission. Other towns say, if we go through the public process, we have the public hearings, we're confident that our town manager or whoever we've authorized can approve it at that point. Obviously, I defer to you about what that process should look like. But then as far as actually choosing the bid on that day goes, we will have to have somebody in the room with the authority to actually select the bid on that day. The timeframe will not necessarily allow us to go through the bidding process, bring the bids back to the town council for discussion. Somebody will have to be authorized to actually choose that day amongst the bids that come in. So I know I answered, there was two separate questions there, I tried to get to both.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about the choice of which electricity creator we choose to send us the electricity, but would like the council to be sure that we can, that we can decide what the structure is going to be, in terms of the tiers about, because I think we could look at, you know, 5% or 20% renewal, or 100% renewable, things like that.
Let me suggest, if I can offer an amendment to your motion, which would be to say as an additional phrase, with the town council having final approval before submission to the Public Utilities Commission. Does that, that make sense? That would mean it would have to come before us-
Yes.
-one more time before it went to the PUC for approval, and that's, that would mean that we'd have an additional approval before the final plans-
Yeah.
...and the final selections are made. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
So, will you accept that?
I will.
And will the seconder accept that amendment?
I will.
Okay. So, motion's been made and seconded, and the motion is to authorize the town of Barrington to enter into a municipal electricity aggregation program with Good Energy of Norwalk, Connecticut, with the town council having final approval before submission to the Public Utilities Commission. And I can, I can give you that after, too, Mary, if that's, you got it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to continuing to work with you.
Start running.
Oh, I got my work cut out for me.
Got the sign yet? So, the next item on our agenda is something that came out of the folks in West Barrington.
Break, Christine.
No, he's gonna recuse on this, too.
Oh, okay.
So, the folks, one of the things in our part of town that you notice is that your cell phone reception is horrible. And until you had Wi-Fi reception, there were a lot of folks who put in these boosters in their, in their homes, and it really didn't matter what, there was always a lot of discussion about whether you got an extra half a bar from changing from Verizon to AT&amp;T to T-Mobile or whatever, but the reception is poor. So, one of the, one of the folks in our neighborhood began a petition, and, I actually, with me, and I forgot to distribute earlier, copies of that petition. The names of the people aren't here, but there are some 150 people who have, who took a survey, and they, in which they identified their cell provider, the average strength on their cell phone signal at home, it would be like one quarter bar, zero out of four bars, that kind of thing. And then, are you able to reliably make complete calls from your cell phone? Yes, but I have to use Wi-Fi calling is a very typical one. I'll pass this around, and then if anyone- So, they created this survey and got the responses, and then drafted a letter for us. I actually didn't draft a letter, but I do think it's pretty good. I didn't have any authorship in it, but-
So this was, the letter was drafted by the community?
Yes. So, and the letter suggests that Verizon look into partnering with Bristol County Water Authority to use that tower that is over near St. Luke's as a possible antenna area, or to increase, to step up the 5G enablement, if that would help. I don't know if it would help, I don't think they knew if that would increase the signal strength where, where our community is. But anyway, that's sort of the basis of this, so has anyone got any interest in talking about this?
A couple of questions. A couple of questions. The gentleman from BCWA, I was wondering if we have any idea if they would allow the water tower to be used? If, they certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't want to include that as a suggestion in the note. If they say maybe, sure, include it, but they might have a policy that says they're never going to do it. If we don't know, we don't know, but that was a question.
We don't, and they were asked. I, I sent a note to them, telling them of this community petition, and the, the notion that someone might want to use the, the water tower on Fountain. I sent them the images that were attached to this letter to say that this was coming up, but I, I haven't heard back from them.
Haven't heard back from BCWA?
That's right. So...
And then I wondered, I couldn't think of anything, but if there's anything that is town property in the area that could potentially be used?
There's Haynes Park, but we don't own it.
We don't own that.
It doesn't sound like DEM would be interested in a cell tower at Haynes Park.
There's school.
Bay Spring Community Center, we do own, but it's...
We have to redo the roof soon, don't we?
We raise it by 100 feet. I think, I think this is probably just to get the process going.
Yeah.
And then, I think...
See what Verizon says.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm comfortable with the way the letter was drafted, but if anyone wants to make some changes to it?
Motion to approve sending this letter to Verizon?
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, and we had one recusal on that, and you've got those, okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on bids. This is for the planning board. This is to award the bid for Walker Farm Preliminary Engineering.
So, just to review real quickly, as was presented, I think, the last meeting, we've got a pretty aggressive three-grant process going on to improve Walker Farm. The first is a Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank Resilience Program Action Grant, which has been awarded to us in the amount of $201,000, with a 25% local match. That's to get all the concrete, torn-up concrete, the lines of shoreline, to clean that up, to also remove any other debris, regrade the slope, the water's edge, and allow migration of the estuary into the already wet field area to increase the wetlands with the rising sea level. In addition to that, we have two other grants in. One's a DEM Large Recreation Development Grant for $230,000, and that's to develop a, on the north end, a boat ramp, not a boat ramp, but more of a walk-in ramp for the, for kayakers and for the rowing team, as well as a floating dock to support that, and an ADA accessible, ADA accessible path. And the third grant is with Rhode Island Coastal and Estuary Habitat Restoration Fund, and that's a grant of $27,000, and that's to, to improve the shoreline by the proposed boat ramp. So, all this together, we want to coordinate these inputs, and we have one of our contract engineering firms, Fussin' O'Neill, and you've seen a piece of their product that I left in front of you for the Bay Spring area, to allow them to begin, would, would amount to about a 50% design plan, to coordinate all of these grants and projects together. It includes, they'll do topographical data, wetland delineation, location of physical features, roadway utilities, that type of thing, and also development of a resilience and habitat restoration plan. So they'll put this plan together. The bid amount is in the amount of $27,000. That would be funded with $20,000 from Municipal Resiliency Program Action Grant, and $6,750 from the Climate Resiliency Capital Reserve, which are town funds. So, basically, it's a $27,000 bid that we're asking for, of which about $7,000, a little less than $7,000, would come from our resilience capital reserve.
Just, first of all, congratulations on getting that grant to you and Phil and Kim Jacobs. I know, you know, that's, that's just a great win for us, and will be a big help.
The, the two grants we're still waiting to hear on, let's say, we don't, we don't receive those. Are we, as, as part of this bid, would we be doing any work toward those that we'd be at risk of not finishing?
We would, we would be doing the design, but even if we weren't awarded those bids, the, the plan would be, as, as DEM continues to roll out bids and other bids become available, we would use this plan to support that continued, those continued projects. We have a pretty good track record, so my hope is, though, we'll get those two grants as well.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Fussin' O'Neill in the amount of $27,000 to complete the initial survey and design development for the Walker Farm Recreation and Resilience Improvement Projects.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing into Ordinance 2020-1, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 3, BV 625. This is, we have an unused BV license, and we'd just be removing it. Any questions from the council?
Just disappointment.
Yes, very.
Well, maybe someone will, any, would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing on this, and I think we're...
I'll make a motion to adopt 2020-1, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Alcoholic Beverage, Beverages, Article 3, BV 625, as presented.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item is Ordinance 2020-2, and I believe the town manager wants to withdraw this.
Well, we can't withdraw it, because it's already been introduced. We could continue it, but I don't think that's necessary. Councilor Hearn expressed her concern with taking this, this particular increase in salary outside of the normal, and after further consideration, I agree. So, any, any recommendation for salary increase in that ordinance will be made with the other salaries in the budgetary process for July 1st. So, this is no longer necessary, and so I respectfully request the council to reject this ordinance.
Would anyone from the public like to be, I'm opening the public hearing, would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Seeing none?
I actually had prepared remarks along the same lines as Joy Hearn had, and I think it's important that we be clear that this had nothing to do with whether the finance director deserved the raise or not, but had everything to do with process. So, I am in agreement, I'll save everyone my prepared remarks, although I think they were pretty good. But I support removing this, or...
Be a motion to reject the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to reject, amend, Ordinance 2020-2, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 45, salaries and compensation, the finance director.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is to discuss and act on resolutions. We have a resolution in support of clarifying that the local tax assessors have the authority to assess property values on an annual basis. Anyone like to be heard on this?
I would, I don't know if, letting anybody else go first if they wanted to, talked a lot, but I was curious who drafted this, and, yeah, I was curious who drafted it.
I think it was Mike Rissillo's office?
This is, this is a resolution that was passed last year by the council, that, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was simply updated for this year.
I don't believe it was passed. I think it was, we put it off to the side.
Who, who drafted it, though, in the first instance? I don't, I don't remember.
I thought it was Tina. I'm going to tell you, as I'm sitting here, I don't recognize it, and I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the tracking at the bottom, which shows where the language came from, and this is not my office's tracking, so, not that that's important, but...
I guess less who took to their keyboard to write it, but at, at whose, what were the instructions that led to this being created and, and presented to us?
I thought that you had asked for it.
No.
Last month, and we couldn't do it.
There was discussion last month about what we've gone through with assessments this year, and about how Massachusetts does it, and the goodness in that. I know President Carroll and I have discussed how, depending on where you come in the cycle, has a significant impact on, on your taxes, and the fairest way would be to do a statistical, basically, a statistical reevaluation every year, so that everyone gets changed every year, instead of me buying a home in the first year and waiting three years for it to get adjusted either up or down. The cost of the reevaluation would not be any significant, because they'd be doing one-third of the work, basically. I think Representative Hearn, in her past life, Councilor Hearn, introduced this legislation, and this resolution is simply an attempt to encourage this legislation to go forward.
I, I don't remember who the source was, but I, I believe that this is the right way to go, to have annual revaluations to allow for it.
I, I agree, annual townwide revaluations, but my read of this didn't sound like annual townwide. It sounded like this is requesting the General Assembly to clarify that the process we went through for 2018 purchases is correct and is what should happen.
Wanted to chime in on this.
I read it as just asking for clarification.
I wouldn't presume that our resolution is going to be what is drafted by the General Assembly and adopted, but thinking about all this, and now that the first round of appeals has been decided, I think it's important to say, and look at the overall effect of all of this, right? So I pulled out the numbers. There were 350 sales in 2018. Of those, about 100 people had their assessment reduced, meaning 250 had it increased. If you account only for those properties that sold for more than $100,000 over their assessment, meaning under-assessed by $100,000, there was $10 million of valuation missing. Now, there's 350 properties that were sold, that is about 5% of the properties in Barrington. So, again, only accounting for under-assessments of $100,000 or more, we should assume that there's $200 million in missed valuation in Barrington. Okay? So you take the $200 million, you divide it by 1,000, because we're going to apply a mill rate to it. You divide that by 1,000, you get 200,000. You multiply that by the mill rate, and what you end up with is that there are $4 million in taxes going uncollected on an annual basis, reallocated to everyone else in town. Okay? You take that $4 million, you divide it by our tax levy, and what it turns out to be is that Barrington's taxes are 7% higher. Everyone's tax bill, 7% of it, goes for no other purpose than to pay for the under-assessment of those properties that are under-assessed by more than $100,000. Right? So, I've heard a lot about the equity in the system that, that was rolled out, and it was rolled out badly, and no one's going to make any bones about that. But it seems to me that what we're losing here, what we're losing here, is that that view of equity is being espoused by someone who was affected by this personally, one taxpayer. But what's being lost is that you have thousands of households who are paying 7% higher in taxes. Now, 7% might not sound like a big number. If you live in a million-dollar house, it's $1,500. If you live in a $500,000 house, you're talking about, and again, these are rough numbers, $650, $700. Right? So these people are paying every month, they're paying $50, $60 a month, that goes to no purpose but to pay for someone else's undertaxation. And I don't care if the legislature says we're going to do it on annual revaluation of the entire town, or if they come up with some other strategy. But the fact of the matter is, when you look at the assessments, there are monstrous, monstrous misses here. Okay? We're talking about under-assessments, and I'll just rattle some of the numbers off, $574,000 under-assessment, $513,000, $448,000. These numbers mean taxpayers in Barrington, someone living in a $574,000 house, their entire tax bill went to pay for the undervaluation of someone else's house. It's unconscionable. Now, we've heard a lot from a group, the Citizens for Taxation with Integrity, and it would seem to me that integrity here means acknowledging that you're undertaxed, that your neighbors are paying for that. And if you can't do that, and say, we need to find a solution to this, if your only solution is to say, you need to bake in my underassessment for three years, that's, that's the opposite of integrity. That's like calling the Patriot Act for patriots. So, I'm at a loss as to how we ended up here, and I'm not happy about how we ended up here. And it's worked out very badly for everyone involved, but the idea that something has been going on inequitable here, I think is laughable. Whether it was legal or not, fair question. But I think, whatever we do with this resolution, we don't need to dwell on the specifics. The question is, will the Assembly ever come around to fixing the mess that's on our hands? Because right now, what Balmouth has said is that if you are over-assessed in a particular year, you can appeal that in every year. The town, or any other taxpayer in town, has no method of curing someone's underassessment. But what we're seeing is that that's having the same effect on people's tax bills, 7%, right? So what we're asking for is, to the legislature, dear General Assembly, the Supreme Court has made a mess, your statutes are a mess, and we're in a bind where we have to suffer what we know to be a $574,000 undervaluation of someone's property for three years. Now, a lot of people would say, well, it's important that all the properties be valued at the same time. Fair question, right? Looking at this list of assessments, for example, there is a property sold in June of 2018. The assessment was done as of December 31, 2017. The underassessment was $274,000. Now, no one is going to say the property appreciated between December 31 and June, $274,000. Add to it that it takes 60 days... Add to it that it takes 60 days to close on a house. So the deal wasn't struck in June, the deal was stuck in March or April. Are we really saying that it took 60 days for the house to appreciate $274,000? Of course not. It was a missed assessment. And now we have angry people, email after email, pounding the table, pounding the podium that somehow they've been mistreated. Now, what has been the imposition on them? The imposition on them is that they had to file an appeal of their taxes. If we had done it in reverse, it would be all the people who had been overtaxed being forced to file an appeal. The way we've done it now, it was the people who were under taxed who were forced to file an appeal. And if you ask me which way seems more fair, I would say we shouldn't impose on the people who are being overtaxed. The imposition should be on the people who are being under taxed. So that being said, I don't want to sit here and, and mess around with pencils in this resolution. This resolution asks for it to be fixed by the General Assembly and the faster we get it to them, the better, is what I say.
Any others on the council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to one thing that Mr. Bois-Geron said, because I'm not sure if I understood...
Just for the record, announce your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie Payne. I'm the, I'm a member of the Barrington Citizens for Taxation with Integrity.
And if you wouldn't mind when you, before you go, just write it down.
Sure. So I'm not sure if I understand what you're saying. Are you saying that when a house sells, you know what its value is? And if, and if it sells for more than what its valuation is, then we should change it to what its sales price is? Is that in order to make everybody even? Heard you saying that, you're going by this list with 300 properties on it and you're saying that somehow those properties are under assessed compared to all the other properties?
They are under assessed compared to properties that are properly assessed, yes.
But which ones are properly assessed?
Well, I can tell you, for example, I know of a particular property that was just appraised for a refinancing and the appraisal came back essentially at the assessed value. I would say that's a pretty good assessment. So the ones that are properly assessed are assessed at their fair market value, which we know is the cash value in the marketplace. Those are properly assessed homes.
We don't have any problem with making everybody even, but that's, that's the problem with the process that we used in 2018. We changed the valuations of all the properties that sold, but we didn't look at whether any of those other properties were undervalued. You're trying to accuse people whose valuations were changed of wanting to get some kind of tax break, but that's not really the way it works because my neighbors, for example, had a valuation equivalent to mine. Seriously, like, and this is an identical house built in almost at the same time, same size lot, same square footage, same amenities, what you would consider an identical property. Were both appraised the same, $680,000. Our sales price was 910, so in 2018, our valuation was 910,000. Does that mean that that property next door was properly valued or not properly valued?
No, it would indicate to me if they really are the same house, they're under assessed too.
Correct. So what are you suggesting that we do as taxpayers to correct or to address that disparity?
Well, I'm suggesting that we need, because like I said, there is no legal mechanism for the town to correct an under assessment except for a triennial revaluation, is apparently the opinion of the Board of Assessment Review. Well, that bakes in mistakes for a number of years. Now, you might look at your next door neighbor's house and say, "This is unfair to me because we live in identical houses, but mine is assessed much higher." Fair enough. Like I said, that is the point of view from an individual taxpayer. I look at it and I say, "In our 7,000 properties in town, we previously had 900 mistakes or 1,000 mistakes, whatever it is, pick a number. Now we have 700. That sounds better."
No, it's not better because it's not treating those people equally. I have no problem with a statistical revaluation every year. That's great, let's do that. But it's got to be done scientifically and applied to everyone the same. You can't let a sales price on one house become its value without revaluing all the similarly situated properties because then what you've done is you've given my next door neighbor a tax break. I'm now paying my neighbor's taxes.
And that's what this resolution is asking the General Assembly to do.
I didn't get that. I kind of got that we're going to let the taxes, I think it says, we're going to let the tax assessor do whatever he wants to every year. It did not say we're going to have the, we're going to ask the legislature to change the law from, all you have to say is let's change the law from triennial statistical revaluations...
To assess property values on an annual basis.
Yes, by statistical revaluation, not by sales price or some other crazy way that you're going to...
That's what it's based on.
Okay, well, I think that should be clear and I'm not sure I understood you to say that.
Well, you can absolutely, during a revaluation year, you can do it by sales price.
Oh, absolutely, if you apply it to everyone. So that would have made the property next door to me change the same as my property did. That's no, that's perfect. That's what we're talking about. I just may have misunderstood you to say that somehow because my house sold for more, I should have to pay more taxes when it's the same as the house next door and somehow the house next door's been paying too little taxes. I mean, too much taxes compared to my house because my house is worth more than it, but it's not. It's worth the same thing.
Well, your neighbor has been under taxed if it's the same house.
And so have we.
They were talking about a hypothetical, first of all.
And so have we.
I, I attend the Board of Assessment Review and that, that argument comes before them and they will say, "Do they have the same granite countertops? Do they have the same layout? How close to the water are they?" So it almost never works out that they are identical houses and, but let's go with that hypothetical for purposes of this. Identical houses, then the house next door was under assessed as well.
Correct. There's no, I won't argue that our house was under assessed. I'll put that out, I'll stipulate. Our house was assessed at 200, at $682,000. That's too little. That was not the market value of our house, but it happened to also be the valuation of the house next door. So how can you say that mine was, that we're going to raise my valuation in 2018 and not address all the others? You can't do, that's, that's, basically the statute's pretty clear on that. You have to treat everybody the same.
I would, I would disagree with you that the statute's clear on anything, but that's what we're trying to do is to make sure that the statutes are clarified.
Okay. I may have misunderstood what Mr. Bois-Geron was saying. I thought he was saying somehow...
What we're talking about is a resolution that would allow us to find a process for annual townwide. Well, it doesn't say townwide, but I'm, I'm going to leave it to the Assembly to figure out how this is done.
Your logic was, your logic sort of escaped me, but I think we may be talking about the same thing.
Let me try to explain it this way. You're talking about the discrepancy between your property and your neighbor's property.
Hypothetically.
Right. What if there's someone across town, doesn't live near either of you, who's just properly assessed, right? And they say correcting one under assessment is better than correcting no under assessments.
I disagree. I disagree with you 100%.
Well, I know you do. I know you do, but I'm talking about the guy across town who has no dog in the fight between you and your neighbor about your assessments. He just says, "My taxes are too high..."
Balmouth says he can come and have that fixed.
Excuse me for one minute. He says, "My taxes are too high. My assessment is proper, so I have no basis to appeal. This is the market value of my house. My assessment is correct, but I know, looking at arithmetic, that there's $4 million of taxes that are being paid by people all around town to cover huge," and I'm not talking about simple market appreciation since the last valuation, "huge under assessments."
Fair enough.
And to him, to that person, and this is about equity, not about law. I'm not talking about what the law allows because we're talking about asking someone to change the law. From his point of view, what is fair is fixing one error is better than fixing no errors. Now, you're going to take issue with that because you said, "Well, that correction of an error came at my expense," and it did. Making no bones about that. That's exactly how it worked. But to the guy across town, he says, "How is it fair to me to say, 'We're going to let all the errors persist and your taxes are going to be 7% higher because you can't correct any of them unless you correct all of them.'" And to him, that seems pretty inequitable.
So if you've got one property that's correctly assessed and I bet you, you're using that list to say that there's only 300 that were incorrectly assessed, I'll bet you there's probably like 3,000.
No, I was saying, I was, I was using this list, I was using this list to say, "There are 20 times as many errors."
Fair enough. I agree. I don't know if that's the number, but it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a big number, a huge number.
It should be 20 times because this is about 1/20th of all the properties in Barrington.
So if, so if, but if you take those 300 properties and you say fixing one is better than fixing them all, what you've done is you've made it worse. You've not only now taxed the guy that's got the similar property, that's got the correct valuation, but you're also overtaxing me who has, now has the correct valuation. You see what I'm saying? You've transferred the burden of all those other people, you just made it worse. You've just made more people pay more tax. The way to do it is to do it all the same.
And that's what we're asking.
Everybody who gets statistically revalued, the computer plugs in all the, plugs in all the data from the cards, it plugs in all the sales prices and what their data is and it looks at it scientifically, it cross examines everything so that it says, "Okay, so that guy across town, he's correctly, he's correctly assessed, but that guy with the waterfront property, his properties aren't selling so well right now, so we think we need to reduce those." The computer actually does this for you. That's, that's perfectly okay, but a random sales chasing is the worst way to take care of it.
Well, I would say I agree that there has to be some uniform way of doing it, but I disagree that waiting for the computer's results, these are the computer's results.
Suppose, suppose I live in a...
These are the computer's results and they result in tax bills that are 7% higher to pay for people's under assessments. Material amounts of money spread all around town. And if we can't acknowledge that an under assessment, and I'll, I'll say, I lived in a house that was under assessed too. I bought it right before a revaluation. It was under assessed for a year when I lived there. If you can't just acknowledge, "I'm asking my neighbors to pay my tax burden. That's what I'm doing." And to bake that in for three years, to me, seems like insanity.
It turns out that the property next to me sold the next year and so, but we're not going to do it, we're not going to do it next, we're not going to do it in 2019, so he got a break, but that would have equalized them, right? But you still have got six, what, 6,000 other properties that are either too high or too low and you just can't, you can't go around and check, everybody that buys and sells a house, change theirs. What about the, what if that house hadn't sold for the next 20 years? Okay, well, a statistical revaluation will come every three years and it'll kind of fix it. But you, but you penalize the people that buy houses when their property is undervalued by making them pay an exorbitant more, you know, this was, we're talking about $5,000 more taxes instead of just the neighbors that are paying, paying $7, too much tax.
Well, I, I guess I would look at it differently. The guy across town is paying for the taxes based on the assessed value of his home, which is correctly assessed. If you buy a house, that's the correct value of your home in almost every case and that's fair to pay your taxes on it. From a fairness point of view, if you're paying, if you bought a house, that's the value of your home, you ought to pay taxes on it, just like Mr. Almeida said, you buy an expensive home, you got to pay taxes on an expensive home, not on a home that's valued at half that price.
Remember when we, the very first conversation we had was about getting all the facts and I'm telling you, we all, we all see it a little different, but you need an expert. You need somebody that knows taxation to come in and explain this and I, I'm not doing a good job of it, but what we've got is some people with a prop, not very many probably, but a few people that have a proper evaluation and probably because the person you're thinking of, his property values went up faster, or his property values actually probably fell so that he came out at the 682,000 level just by market influences. He may have never sold his house before, but it's when you, we all agree that if someone buys a house, pays $300,000 more for it and incurs a $500,000 tax, a $5,000 tax and the neighbor next door does it and, and their tax stays the same, actually goes down seven cents by the numbers in that, in that spreadsheet. All the rest of the guys got a seven cent break, but the ones who bought houses got anywhere between a $100,000 valuation, you know, it's like half a million people that were valued improperly, but it's a very small number. It's only 300 people. And so statistically what that does is it takes that $4 million and it puts all on those 300 people. So their taxes go up 5,000, everybody in town pays $7 less, but look at, look at the disparity there. Look at what you've done to the people that buy houses. It just doesn't make sense. There are better ways to do it.
It makes sense to me that if you buy a house, you should pay the taxes based on the value of that house.
No, Mike, and, and you've read the statute. I know what you said, I know it, you understand what it says. It says, "Every home shall be valued at 100% of its market value or some equal percentage thereof." So if we assume that all the houses are valued at 10% of their market value, that's okay as long as they're all the same. You, because then the tax burden's spread evenly.
Exactly. We, we assess at 100% value in this town.
Correct. Fair enough. On the statistical revaluation years you do, you attempt to get back, get everybody back to the market value. At the end of 2017, everybody was the same. It was fine. I mean, and they're not the same, you know, we have to agree that nothing's perfect. Nobody's ever going to have the perfect valuation and the legislature realizes that too. But what we're striking, what we're looking for is that those fourth, those 3,000 homes that are undervalued, you can't change 300 of them all the way up to their market value and not make everybody the same. A statistical revaluation every year is fine. I don't, I think that's the perfect way to do it.
I think that's the best way, but I'm, I'm not saying that there's no other solution. Like I said, one of these houses was sold in June, which means, like I said, the PNS was probably signed in March or April, which was about 90 days after the revaluation date. It was under assessed by $274,000.
Okay.
Now, for all intents and purposes, the proper value as of the revaluation date, the same date that everyone else was assessed, was $274,000 higher.
No, my neighbor was different. My, we, our next door neighbor with identical health...
What you're saying, I think you're kind of proving my point, which is, there is no way to correct your neighbor's under valuation. That is what we're begging for. Your neighbor's under valuation is what is driving this whole problem.
Correct. Agreed. So you're saying there's no way to correct that?
But, but, but what I'm saying is you are someone else's neighbor too, so your under valuation is driving the problem. For all the people who are properly assessed, who were assessed at the right number, many of whom bought and sold their houses in 2017, mind you, because that was going to be their assessment.
Right.
Right? So what you're saying to someone who bought and sold in 2017 is you are assessed at the full market value of your house because you bought it in 2017.
And theoretically, all the houses, all the houses.
But that's only theoretically because now that we have numbers, we know that's not at all the case. So, so you're saying that in 2017, someone who was assessed at the value that, at which they brought their property in 2017, that's the right number on 12/31/17. When someone signs a PNS agreement in March of 2018 and it's $274,000 higher than their assessment, you're saying the $274,000 lower number is a more fair number to the taxpayers of Barrington in the aggregate?
I think we're looking for the same solution, but I hear, what I hear you saying is that a random sort of arbitrary reassignment of value for 300 properties, the sale of the house didn't change the value, it just identified the problem.
Just corrected it.
Yeah, well, okay, so we're going to go identify 300 properties every year. Out of the 3,000 that are wrong, we're going to get, we're going to pick up 300, right? And you're saying that's a better way to do it than a statistical revaluation?
No, not at all.
Okay, I misunderstood you.
Not at all. I'm not saying that's at all better. What I'm saying is, I wouldn't presume to write the legislation for the legislature. What I think we need to do to them is point out that there's a problem and tell them to get to work fixing it.
Yeah. Well, I would clearly support, I mean, I think everybody would agree that an annual statistical revaluation is better than a triennial and that's what Massachusetts does. Massachusetts does not do sales chasing. It does not go around changing individual properties just because they sold because that's a disincentive to sell your house, basically.
Well, they have little reason to because if they do it annually, they're accounting for the sales every year.
That's, that's my point too.
Well, that's not sales chasing, that's assessment.
So if we do a statistical revaluation every year, we don't have an argument. But if you're suggesting that in lieu of a statistical revaluation every year, we'll go and get those, pick up those 300 that are wrong...
That's not what he's saying.
And raise their taxes $5,000 rather than the $7 that everybody else is having to pay too much. These, I mean, it's a burden, no matter what you do, but you can't...
Again, the $5,000 that you're talking about was a result of what was an actual misassessment only 90 days prior. What I'm saying is, we need a way to fix undervaluations. I'm not saying we should confine ourselves to the 300 properties... I'm not saying we should confine ourselves to the 300 properties that are sold in a given year. I'm saying, we need to find all of these, because it's costing taxpayers a boatload of money.
We are in agreement on that. We're absolutely in agreement on that.
Can I interject? That's happening in, in every town. It's not just Barrington.
Yes, it is happening in every town. And just for the record, the reason I didn't, Peter Swartz in my office prepared this resolution back in October at the Council's direction. What happened was, we transferred it to Mary, and then she put it on her computer, and that's why I didn't recognize the tracking. But just to do an explanation, Jacob, as you asked the question at the very beginning about the, that therefore be it resolved. Apparently, the suggestion was that, "Don't make this annual revaluation mandatory for every city and town in the state of Rhode Island, because not every town would have the resources to pay for that." Which is why it's asking to give, make it clear that every town has the authority to do it if they want to pay for a revow every year. Yeah, so--
Mr. Osillo, my only point is, I'm in total agreement with everything you said, so long as it's a statistical revaluation.
Yeah, 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 that's what it would be.
Yeah, I'd like--
I think the wording in there, though, is not clear. If that's what the intention is, then Mr. Boisjon and I agree 100%.
Yeah, it would have to be. It would have to apply, it would have to apply townwide for it to be legal.
Just like northeast revaluation comes in every three years, we'll have them come in every year. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it would have to, and I don't know if it would be a northeastern thing, but it would have to be, in essence, a fear process that looks at the entire town.
Applies to each house, my neighbor as well as mine. Yes. So I think that's probably the key, that's--
If I can just clarify the cost issue, you're basically doing 1/3 of the math every year, instead of all the math every three years. So it's, while it may be a little bit more expensive, it isn't like you're going to be paying that triannual payment every single year. It'd be cut down to almost a third.
Yes, and you're just entering the new data every year. Is that what you're saying? You're entering the new data every year. The new sales data, whatever.
Can I speak, please?
So it's easier.
Yes, hold on just a minute. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Did you finish, Counselor?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I think Counselor Bajajin's numbers are probably pretty low, because one of the, one of the points he made is about 20, or 5% of the homes sold, and it was a total difference of $320,000 in taxes. So if you multiply that by the 20, we're looking at over $6 million. And I do think that this urgently needs a resolution, but the therefore clause in this, to say at the end of it, "Are not intended to and do not preclude local assessors from exerting their yearly valuation, exercising their yearly valuation authority pursuant to the law in any way," that, that would resolve that this is a, that what we did was a proper way to do it. And so I think, I would like to move to strike in any way, and change it to, provided it's done in a uniform, townwide manner, or something to that effect.
I think, right on the general laws, 4451 does say that. We can find the language of that, but--
Then, then just strike in any way. I don't--
It sounds as if you're, you're disagreeing with that statute, that portion of statute. We'd like for that to stay, the one you just read.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that, that it does already say that.
Right, but I'm concerned that's a resolution that's construed. It doesn't sound like you want to be able to use any method.
So what, 4451 says the taxes, there's a lot before this, but it's all non-material to this. "The taxes apportioned upon the assessed valuations as determined by the assessor of the city or town as of December 31 and each year at 12:00 AM midnight, the date being known as the date of the assessment."
Right, but then that was followed with the words "in any way." And I would like to change "in any way" to "in a uniform manner townwide." So that we are having statistical revaluations every year, if we choose to, as opposed to only changing the assessments on the homes that sold.
Mr. Osillo, you're probably more familiar with the, the whole chapter than, than any of us are. But there are other provisions of the chapter that say that, that valuations will be, the valuations on homes will all be made in the same, using the same method, essentially. And then it also says that you can do it in any percentage, so long as it's the same percentage. So there are statutes that already protect us from sales chasing, so to speak. But what, but what this could be misconstrued as is that we want those other provisions to be amended.
Yeah. So, so I don't disagree with Jacob's suggestion that we strike the "in any way."
Agreed.
That's a little broad. Because it really isn't "in any way." It has to be a fair and equitable way. Right? And I don't think there's any disagreement on the Council about that.
I think it's important to understand how just sales price for those houses that sold creates a more inequitable distribution of the taxes.
Yeah, I disagree with that, but we don't have to agree on it. So if we strike the words "in any way," will we be able to get a unanimous vote on this?
I think, Jacob, I think the rest of the language makes it clear, in all, in the statutes, that it would have to be in some type of uniform way that applies equally throughout the town. I understand your point.
Okay.
I think we're good if we just get rid of "in any way."
Okay.
Thank you, Senator Sol, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll move to adopt the resolution as amended. Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the legislative breakfast. The school committee has asked that we, I think we, last time we had one of these, we kind of went very long. So they've asked us to shorten our remarks on, on how we want to approach this. So the, the thought was that if we come up in advance and we say, "These are the issues that we'd like to address," and we don't, we don't repeat the same ones. If someone wants to address this particular issue, we can all say, you know, "I agree with that," without going into it. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So if we can, maybe what we can do is submit in proposed topics to address, and then if there's an overlap, we'll be able to see that. Mike, it'd be okay if we're not discussing it, to identify the topics that we want to do.
Sure.
So maybe we can do that.
Okay.
In advance of that, we'll, we'll submit these, we'll all see them, and then we'll say, "Okay." Counselor Breyer's going to talk about this.
Who do we, who do we submit these to?
To Mary, and she can submit them to all of us. Send them to us.
Can I just make one suggestion about the agenda?
Yeah.
We have 10 minutes for, for welcome and opening remarks, and only 15 minutes talking about policies of the respective bodies. Can we just, we've all met before.
Yeah.
Can we strike that and reallocate that time elsewhere if we're trying to?
That is last year's by the way. I just pulled it up because I don't have it from Nancy.
Oh, right, right. That's 20, I, I'm still not ready for saying 2020, someone, I saw 2019.
Some of us were new last year.
But I can say that to Nancy when she needs--
Perfect. It's kind of hard for me to clear my throat in just 10 minutes. Okay.
And I'll, I'll continue to forward the league stuff. Most of that's municipal impacting, and we'll get another update next Monday. And sometimes we get interims during the week, so I'll keep forwarding those out, so that if any, anything new percolates up from the State House, you'll be aware of it.
Okay. Great. So the next is set agenda for the March 2, 2020 Town Council meeting. One is to discuss an act on the proposed charter changes. That's a request that we've made, for us to identify areas of the charter that we think need to be changed. And then, once we've identified these areas, let's prioritize them and pick two or three to put on this agenda. Now, we say two or three, there's nothing constraining us from doing more, it's just that in 2014, there were 30--
Yeah, we just don't want 30.
--which just diluted the effect of any of the changes, and it was hard for anyone to kind of focus on those.
So will we be looking to finalize this next month? Or is kind of next month, discuss all the things, subsequent month, go into more detail? I'm just curious about preparation.
We should probably plan to be done in April.
Okay.
So that, that gives Mary enough time to get anything. We would set, basically, we would be putting what's going to be on the ballot.
Right.
And that takes a while to get through to the Board of Elections, so. So I think we should target being done with this and identifying our priorities to fix or add or subtract to the charter.
Pick the things next month, and then pick the wording, the subsequent month?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing is, the, we're going to talk about the ad hoc trail commission next, next month, and look into that. We were, we were going to also talk about, if, if we can get those changes back in that time, the anti-harassment discrimination policy.
Oh, yes. You'll have them for the March.
Okay. Anything else for that?
There's a couple of things I'd like to see on the agenda. One of them would be an economic report for the town. There's a lot of things moving out of town, plus our economics, we'll do about that. I'd also love to hear--
Joy, can, I, I'm not sure what you're looking for with the economic report.
Kind of a sense of what's going on. I mean, we've got lots of empty properties. I'm just--
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could certainly collect data. I'm not sure we have the ability to do an assessment and collect, you know, dollar figures and that type of thing. I mean, we know what businesses have closed, and why they've closed, and who may be moving in. But besides that, we don't get an awful lot of feedback. Planning has some, you know, like with the Starbucks, for example, that type of thing. But I'm not sure what data we can grab onto.
Are you, you're kind of looking for why?
I guess I would love a vision. I'd love a why are they leaving, kind of a vision for, kind of what's to come next, I guess. And I guess if there's not an answer for that, there's not an answer for that. I'd also be interested in the tax implications of empty storefronts. Are the taxes the same on those properties? I suspect not.
It's the, well, it depends on which, whether you're the property owner or--
Yeah, I mean, I just heard the other day, Rite Aid's, Rite Aid's closing in March.
Yes.
Why are they closing? Didn't, I heard they had a sign problem. I'm, you know, just intrigued if--
Mary, could, could you ask that, that be put on, ask the Chair of the Economic Development Committee to look into that?
I think his meeting is in two weeks.
Yeah.
So I'll talk to him.
It might take more than a month. I think they should weigh in.
Yeah, and maybe it's just a written report in, you know, they may be on it. I just am intrigued, and was wondering if we could have more information on that. The other piece I would like to hear about, and maybe it's, again, more depth of a report, would be our recruitment outreach for women and minority candidates in our police and fire hirings, and just hirings in general.
I can tell you, we, Mary Ann's not here, but we recruit in, in MAGA's--
I'm going to interrupt, because this is definitely not on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, no. Trying to come up with a topic.
Okay.
If you're going to start discussing what you're doing--
No, all right.
They can add it to the agenda.
We've got an, we'll get an answer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Those were my things.
Anything else? And of course, if anything comes up, we can, we can add it to the agenda. Now, do I hear a motion pursuant to 42465A1, personnel James J. Cunha, Town Manager, Annual Review, and to, to move into executive session, and to, to discuss executive session minutes from January 7, replacement on the Town Council agenda for Monday, March 2? So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded.